Good evening, thank you for joining us this evening. I apologize for being a little bit late, our closed session ran over. I want to go ahead and call tonight's meeting of county commissioners to order and welcome everyone, it looks like we've got a good crowd this evening. The invocation is, Michael Scott here, do I see? He was gonna come give the prayer tonight, I guess maybe our time's got off. Alright, nope. Well if you'll join me in prayer tonight to open our meeting. Dear Heavenly Father, please help us tonight as we make decisions on behalf of our great people in Stanley County and guide us to make decisions that benefit everyone in our great county. Be with us as we leave here tonight and go home, keep us safe, be with everyone here tonight and guide all of our decisions. Your name we pray, amen. If you would join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, indivisible, and just as long as our.
Are there any adjustments to tonight's agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Furr.
I would like to get the board to move item number six, not to number two please.
Alright, we have a motion to move item number six, detention center naming consideration from item six to item two, is there any other discussion or changes? There's a second to that motion, a second by Commissioner Lohman. All those in favor please say aye. Any opposed, no. Alright, item number one on our agenda tonight is the East Albemarle Elementary Student Essays. Presenter Ms. Krista McGuire.
Thank you for having us here tonight, this is our third annual community partnership project where East Albemarle Mayor Ronnie Michael and county manager Andy Lucas agree upon a prompt that our students will write about and this year our prompt was, what do you think is the biggest challenge in your community and how could we solve it? Now the prompt had to be simplified for a few grades, but we have tonight four students that are gonna read their winning essays. We had a few that couldn't make it because they were sick, but we are real excited to have these four with us. So when I call your name if you'll come up to the front, we have kindergartner Landon Odi, we have 3rd grader Teddy Morton, 4th grader Brianna Rincon, and 5th grader Camden Plyler. We have some, they're nervous about to get the best of them, but we hope that we can get this going, may we use this microphone? I'll have to figure out how to use it. Okay, we'll see. Does this work? I'm late, I'm sorry. Oh, super. Okay, so we're gonna come over here to the side so they can all see you and we'll let you read your writing, okay? You ready?
Yes.
Tell me what your name is.
Landon.
And this is your writing.
Where I live, I wished Chick-fil-A could be finished.
Good job. Hang on, right up here, okay? And then we, I'm sorry, we got Teddy Morton.
My name is Theodore Morton and this is my writing. My community is important to me because I have many family and friends that live in my community and I live in this community. I care about my and other people's health. I like living in Albemarle because they have a good mayor. Our community is very helpful and smart when they do things. I feel that the biggest challenge that our community is facing is homelessness. I think that because lately our community has been seeing many homeless people. I'm not just saying by Walmart, it's been everywhere. Every time I would see homeless people, I would go for two minutes and then they'd be escorted by police or guards where they are. If I do not see them, I would think that they were escorted, but they came back the next day. It has been happening for the past few months and they are very hungry. They have signs for help, but no one will donate to them. If we don't do this, people will starve and maybe even lose their life. No one would care for them. We can fix this problem by making a shelter for homeless people and encouraging others to help donate to them. When there is no more homeless people, there is number one, not as much abuse to them, number two, the community will have everyone healthy, and number three, we will have a safer environment in Albemarle. We could have maybe like ads to help them and people would see it and help them. We could also get schools to raise fundraisers for the homeless people. And we don't need just money, we could have food and clothes. How we could get these food and clothes is by getting people from schools and community centers to shop for them. We could go around Albemarle getting the homeless people and we could help them. I think that we should build this around the center of the town so that people would see it. Most people are in the main place of Albemarle. Everyone, when they go by, would see the homeless people and give. Once one homeless person has a home, we will start with another and that cycle will go on until everyone is happy and has a home. I think that will solve this problem.
Tell me what your name is.
Brianna.
Okay, you'll mail it or you'll... Okay. You read your writing.
I think the biggest challenge in my community is littering. There are several reasons why this is the problem in Albemarle. One reason this is a problem is it causes pollution. Another reason is less fresh water. One solution is having more trash cans in the neighborhood. Each time that you recycle or throw something away, you get a coin. You can, you get to play in the arcade at the end of the neighborhood. When you put in the code on your coin, then you get into the arcade for an hour. Another solution is having more girly things. You can go to the nail salon and get your nails done for free by entering the code on the coin. If you enter it wrong, you can't get in and you have to retry.
Good job. Tell me what your name is.
My name is Camden Plyler. Good evening everyone, my name is Camden Plyler and today I'm going to be talking about a problem that I think is important and that people need to bring up more often. And it is not only a problem in our community, but also a problem worldwide and I think we can fix it by if we really tried and everyone pitched in. The problem that I think is important is speeding. I think it could be solved by people paying more attention when people drive and it might even be a good idea to involve a driving counselor to come to the city and not only teach kids, but adults about car safety and speeding and how to prevent it. Speeding is very dangerous and can cause injuries, bills, traffic, wrecks, tragedies, drama, and anxiety. It is especially dangerous to be speeding with a child. Children are much more delicate than adults and cannot usually handle a car wreck as good as they can. Ways to keep children safe in the car is to stay in the backseat until qualified to and keep seat belts on. Children should also stay in a car seat until the appropriate age. I know that car safety is important because I had a friend that was in the front seat and did not have a seatbelt on and got in a car crash because a truck wasn't paying attention and pulled up in front of her and her brother and the, and her brother. And the impact was extremely hard and unfortunately she passed away from the impact of the airbag in the truck. And her brother, the driver, was also seriously injured and had to be rushed to the hospital and broke a lot of bones and ended up in serious pain. Ways we can prevent speeding and wrecks is to encourage people you know to be cautious when driving and be aware of where you are going and what you are doing. It is also important to use turning signals so people know where you are going and to always use your headlights at night or when it's dark out. I hope by working together, we can all stop speeding and have car safety and have common sense. And yes, sometimes we will have accidents and that is okay. I hope now you'll take driving a little more seriously. Thank you for your time and be safe.
So we encourage you guys to come to school and look at all of the writing, they had some very interesting topics and some very interesting solutions. If there's any way we could get a picture before we go, we would love to have a picture of all of our commissioners and our winners here if we could.
Ms. Seeful, join them down there.
Good job. Good job. Good job there too.
So these are the ones that will replace you guys up there. Alright, we'll get shorter ones in the front maybe. Come around behind. Alright, we'll get shorter ones in the front maybe. Come on up here, you can stand behind these guys right here. Super.
It must say Chick-fil-A.
Yeah, really. Thank you so much. Mr. Landon. Oh yes, oh, can we get one more, sorry.
Time out. You're fine, you're right there. Alright guys. Perfect, thank you.
She got three, you have to case it later.
Sorry about that.
Tommy's got the program to fix it. You good?
Thank you all for that and if that's an example of what we have to look forward to in Stanley County, I think we're in safe hands, so. Our next item tonight will be the Detention Center Naming Consideration. Our presenter is gonna be county manager Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. A few weeks back, Commissioner Furr kindly requested that staff research the cost of placing former Sheriff Ralph L. McSwain's name on the Detention Center facility in recognition of his many years of service in Stanley County. In your packet, we included a potential option for that recognition and the cost associated with installing that sign with Ralph L. McSwain's name on it. And just looking at that, that option, one of the things that I would recommend that the board consider is actually just keeping Stanley County where it is, placing the black and gold plaque with Ralph L. McSwain's name on it, currently where the Detention Center sits, and then put Detention Center underneath it. And that way you don't have Detention Center sort of mentioned twice. Because right now you have Stanley County Detention Center and then you have Ralph L. McSwain Detention Center right underneath it. I would, I would think that if you had Stanley County, Stanley County Ralph L. McSwain Detention Center, it would look a little more, it would flow a little better. So that would be what I would, if you're, if you're gonna look at this and approve it, I would, I would think that it may make more sense to move the Detention Center letters down and place that placard in between. So that's just a note and that will increase the cost, I think we projected the cost to be about $250. Moving those letters will add to the cost. I don't think it'll be substantial, you know, you're probably looking at another hundred to $200 at the most to move those letters. Some of that we may be able to do with our own staff, so it may not cost us anything. But if we have to get somebody to come out and actually move the Detention Center down so you can put Ralph L. McSwain's name in between, it may, it may add to that cost and just wanna make sure the board's aware of that going into this, making this decision. So be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas. Mr. Furr, would you like to speak?
I would sir.
Alright.
I'd like to just take this time to say that I'd like to nominate and honor a great man of Stanley County. He was a deputy from 1962, excuse me, he was a deputy in September of 1955. In 1962, he became high sheriff and he stayed for six terms, seven total, for a total of 28 years. Between everything, he was in office for some 35 years. During this time, in 1980, while trying to arrest a suspect for a home invasion, he was shot several times and spent quite some time in the hospital and had several surgeries. He stayed true to his office and to all the citizens of Stanley County. And again, this man is Ralph L. McSwain and he's seated here with us today. When we were approached to do this, after this, I deemed it an honor to put it in front of the commission and to rename and be the Ralph L. McSwain Detention Center. And I hope this in some way will show that we don't forget what has happened, what has been, what has protected us. At this given time, I'd like to turn it back over to you sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Furr. Is there any other discussion or comments?
Chairman.
Commissioner Jordan, sorry.
Two things, Commissioner Furr shared that with me, please tell me if I'm right, Commissioner Furr. This was brought to us by current members of the Sheriff's Department.
Yes.
That, that to me says a lot. I don't, I've never had the pleasure to meet, to meet you Sheriff, I've never met you outside of this room tonight and I hope I get to shake your hand, but it says a lot when people who serve two decades after you, you know, want to nominate you for that kind of thing. I hope a lot of us can, I hope some of us at some point can be remembered for something that, you know, by the people that replaced us two generations later. It's pretty awesome. And as another thought, I don't know if this is the time, but I just thought, and Mr. Lucas, you had a good point there about Detention Center being a little bit redundant in the way it was proposed, but maybe just as a consideration, something like the line, something along the lines of keeping the sign the format that it is, but maybe put Ralph L. McSwain dash honoring 35 years of service or something like that. Just a thought that we may could use that sign space in a different way, I'm not sure who makes that decision, but just an idea. Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion? It's a pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we do approve this, regardless of how it may wind up being worded or positioned, but I support having the sign done.
There's a motion in a second to move forward with naming the Detention Center the Ralph L. McSwain Detention Center. I think we need to clarify for county staff exactly how that's gonna be, whether it be something like in the picture provided in our agenda packet or whether we decide to move it down. I think we need to, we need to have that discussion. I'll recognize the motion in the second if they'll give me the leisure to have that discussion on top of that. Thank you.
Mr. Morgan.
I like the county manager's idea of putting it in the middle and moving the Detention Center down, I think it looks better and it's presentable. It may be a little bit more, but I think it'll look ten times better that way.
There any, I, I'm personally in favor of that model, moving Detention Center down and having it the Stanley County Ralph L. McSwain Detention Center. It reads better in my, my opinion, but if everybody is okay with that added to Commissioner Jordan's motion, I would call for a vote, all those in favor.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Lohman.
I do have one other item I'd like to discuss, the cost, I think it's 350, $500, something of that nature.
Right.
That's taxpayer dollars.
Yes.
I for one would be willing to pay one-seventh as a commissioner to get this done and would hope the other six of you would be willing to do the same.
I'll do that. Is there any other discussion? I know several commissioners have committed to paying one-seventh. County manager Lucas will probably have to instruct us on the best way to do that, write a check or whatever.
The best way to do it would be just to write a check for, you know, the one-seventh that that's the gift you'd like to give and we'll put it in a miscellaneous revenue and we'll use that to help offset the cost of doing that.
Alright, I certainly understand if a commissioner chooses not to, I just, if you're willing to give that donation, I would make that donation to the fund, just put it attention to the county manager. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Anybody that chooses not to do it, I think you're part of it.
Alright. Any further discussion? All those in favor of this, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries, seven to zero. Mr. McSwain, it is an honor to have you in the room tonight. Sitting in this chair, I don't know that I could fathom 35 years of service, but I appreciate what you have done for Stanley County. And I know we've been, we got up for one picture, but I would, if you would honor us, I would really love to come down and have at least my picture made with you. If anybody else would wanna join, I would, I would be glad for them to join me. Is that okay with you? Alright, commissioners, chairman.
Yes, sir.
Sheriff Crisco has been a huge proponent of this, would you join us for the picture?
Yes, sir.
If it's alright, I would personally love to thank you all. He's the love of my life and I've taken care of him for a long time and this means a lot to him and it means a lot to me and our family and our friends. We've got church family, caretaker that helps take care of him with me. And we're just so thankful and for Jeff, Jeff is my second favorite chair. And my son, he followed in Ralph's footsteps, he just completed 30 years of law enforcement. But thank y'all so much and thank you ladies for spearheading this. This just means so much to us, thank you.
I'm, I am 41 years old, I literally cannot think of anything, anything I have ever done.
Pat, you gonna tell somebody driver's license, do big shoes?
I just got mine, I knew you'd guess weird.
I know she did mine.
And it was different, I don't think I could do it anymore. But I noticed a lot of stuff, Daddy's back here, that were with Ralph years ago and I could tell a lot of tales. But we loved them all.
He's gonna have to sit down.
He's gonna have to sit down.
I have to need you to make that.
Get us all in here?
Yeah. Yes.
It's pretty hard to get.
It'll take several.
This is him. This is all about him.
Thank you, man.
Good job.
Good job.
So these are the ones that will replace you guys up there.
Alright, we'll get shorter ones in the front maybe.
If y'all don't mind, we're gonna have to excuse ourselves.
Do you want a picture of just me and y'all in the chair?
Yep.
You come up here, babe.
I kinda sweated you into that one, that's not long.
I'm gonna call a five-minute recess, just so, I know some people wanted to leave, it'll give time to clear out the room and some commissioners needed a brief second. Alright, I'll call the meeting back to order. We will continue with what is now item number three, the proclamation for National FBLA PBL Week, an introduction of the Stanley Community College PBL Businessperson of the Year. Our presenter is the chapters of those various organizations.
Throughout the country, February 4th to the 9th, colleges and high schools are celebrating National Future Business Leaders of America Five Beta Lambda Week. I am Monica Chang, president of the Stanley Community College PBL chapter and we're excited to be promoting the advantages of PBL membership on our campus. With me from SCC tonight are Giselle Chavez, who served as PBL State Vice President, Brittany Pouch, Katrina Sams, Akira Odetary.
And I'm Corey Seeland, I'm from Farfue University. We're busy promoting the FBLA goals during this week as well and with me tonight is Tim Hoffman, our treasurer.
FBL Five Beta Lambda is a national organization for college students interested in developing skills in business, professionalism, and leadership.
Based on the point system, the Stanley Community College chapter is proud to have been one of North Carolina's five Gold Seal chapters last year. As last year's chapter president, I was proud that we went on to be designated Gold Seal at the national level as well. Our chapter annual business report, which documented all of our projects and participation in PBL activities at the local, state, and national levels, not only won first place at a state level, but went on to be named first place winner in the national competition in Baltimore last June.
One of our annual projects is our participation in the National Businessperson of the Year program. During National PBL Week, chapters throughout the country select a local businessperson who serves as an example of sound business practices, integrity, and strong customer relation. Tonight, we're pleased to present our 2019 SCC PBL Businessperson of the Year award to Ms. Nancy Bowers, owner of Albemarle Nutrition. With me from SCC tonight are Giselle Chavez, who served as PBL State Vice President, Brittany Pouch, Katrina Sams, Akira Odetere.
And I'm Corey Seeland, I'm from Firefly University. We're busy promoting the FBLA goals during this week as well, and with me tonight is Tim Hoffman, our treasurer.
FBL Five Beta Lambda is a national organization for college students interested in developing skills in business, professionalism, and leadership.
Based on the point system, the Stanley Community College Chapter is proud to have been one of North Carolina's five gold seal chapters last year. As last year's chapter president, I was proud that we went on to be designated gold seal at the national level as well. Our chapter annual business report, which documented all of our projects and participation in PBL activities at the local, state, and national levels, not only won first place at a state level, but went on to be named first place winner in the national competition in Baltimore last June.
One of our annual project is our participation in the National Business Person of the Year program. During National PBL Week, chapters throughout the country select a local business person who serve as an example of sound business practices, integrity, and strong customer relation. Tonight, we're pleased to present our 2019 SCC PBL Business Person of the Year award to Ms. Nancy Bowers, owner of Albemarle Nutrition. Ms. Bowers is celebrating her twelfth year in business and we are proud to call attention to her local business. Ms. Bowers, it is a pleasure for us to present you with our Business Person of the Year award for 2019.
Thank you.
In closing, the Stanley and Pfeiffer chapters are looking forward to our State Leadership Conference, the first of April in Charlotte, and the 2019 National Leadership Conference this June in San Antonio. One of the presiding officers in Texas will be Amy Ray, a Stanley Community College graduate who is now an accounting student at UNC Charlotte and was elected at the National Conference in Baltimore last summer as the PBL National Treasurer.
The national theme for PBL this year is create, lead, inspire, and our chapters are working hard to make this idea a reality for our members. Throughout this week, we are celebrating various promotions, including Community Service Day, Career Awareness Day, and Advisor Appreciation Day on Wednesday.
For the West Stanley High School, the advisor is Mr. John Thompson.
And for Pfeiffer University, the advisors are Ms. Tina Pressler, Dr. Anna Smith, and Ms. Deborah Wood.
For Stanley, our advisors are Ms. Tammy McWayne and Mr. Dan Hazlett. Our advisors agree that PBL is a good way to teach and provide the skills that will make us the business educational, civic, and government leaders of tomorrow.
As we continue promoting education in business, as well as making our members more aware of the American enterprise system, we appreciate the county commissioners and other civic and government groups that are building the business foundation of Stanley County. We thank you too for recognizing National PBL Week by signing this proclamation. We will display it proudly this week as we continue our activities.
Thank you again for allowing us to recognize Ms. Bowers as part of your meeting tonight and your continued interest in future business leaders of America and Five Beta Lambda by making the National PBL Week official here in Stanley County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Commissioners, there is a sample proclamation in the agenda pack. And is there any discussion? What's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman, I'll make the motion that we accept this proclamation, making National FBLA and PBL Week, February fourth through the ninth, two thousand nine.
Thank you, Commissioner Lawhan, and a second by Commissioner Morgan. Is there any other discussion on the proclamation? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. What is now item four, the Coggins Road closing request. We have a presenter, the attorney, Will Taylor.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight. I'm here with Mr. Jimmy Faust from Culp Lumber, who would like to talk about the proposed road closure of Coggins Road.
Thank you, Will. Got a brief presentation for Culp Lumber Company. My name is Jimmy Faust. I'm the project manager at Culp Lumber. For those of you who don't know, Culp Lumber Company is a lumber manufacturing company in the north end of the county. It's been around nearly a hundred years and employs right at a hundred and ten people. So I appreciate your time, and if you have any questions before we get started, if not, I'll get, get right into it. Okay, he switched over. Reasons for the road closure, facilitate growth for the company, provide an opportunity for a new industrial entrance on Highway fifty-two. Right now, our entrance is on Old Highway fifty-two, which is more of a residential road, and to promote safety in the community. Just overview of our 2018 production, loads of logs, sixteen thousand three hundred and fifteen annually, that's about three hundred and twenty-six per week coming into the facility. Loads of byproducts, which includes chips, sawdust, mulch, and residue, that's about seven thousand three hundred and forty-seven annually, around a hundred and forty-seven per week, and loads of finished lumber, around a hundred and one per week. And says seventy-five percent comes from the south and eighty-five percent comes from the south. I'll tell you why that's relevant a, as we progress. Coggins Road, I don't know if you're familiar with Coggins Road location. The large road on the left-hand side of your screen is Highway fifty-two. Culp Lumber is on your right. Below it is the asphalt plant, J.T. Russell and Sons, and to the left is the Fibron Shipping Plant, I believe. So that's kind of where Coggins Road is located. That road runs between us and Russell's. Everything that you see from Highway fifty-two to all the way on the blue, the blue roof there is the Tar Heel Challenge Academy gym. Everything you see on that road from the backside of their property to Highway fifty-two is all zoned, heavy industrial, both for us and J.T. Russell and Sons. And this is where we'll get to the, the part about seventy-five percent comes from the south. If you notice the arrows, some fifteen years ago, the president of Culp Lumber Company, Hank Culp, decided not to take our trucks through the town of New London. At that time, there was a school there, it was New London School. Now it's Tar Heel Challenge Academy, but he just did not think as we grew that we needed log trucks and finished lumber trucks and our byproduct trucks going through the town. So he, he made them go around. If you can see, they go up fifty-two, come back down Highway fifty-two. That's about an extra mile and a half for each load, so that's about two to three miles. But they thought the safety of the community was outweighed by the cost of going that extra mileage, and if you start figuring twenty thousand trips, that starts adding up. The downside to this is we do not own the log trucks, they're separate entities. We suggest and strongly suggest that they go the route we go, but we cannot force them. They've done the calculations and they know an extra couple miles round trip for them is money out of their pockets, so all we can do is suggest. What we are suggesting with the closure of Coggins Road is putting an industrial entrance right there on fifty-two across from that Fibron. That would eliminate, they would not have any need to go through the town because they would not use that old Highway fifty-two entrance. And just stop me if you have any questions or need me to explain it any further. I know it's hard. If you can see the A on the map, that is our current entrance now. As you can see, you have to go through the town. That's just a brief overview. And here's the proposed industrial entrance. That is Highway fifty-two. That is the old Coggins Road's kind of laid underneath it. We would have a new entrance that would come in and kind of come around the side, and then another entrance kind of veering off that would head towards J.T. Russell. And we have spoke with the president of J.T. Russell, Raymond Russell, and he is on board and signed a petition that he would be glad to have Coggins Road closed as well. They cannot bring loaded trucks in that way because the road's not suitable for heavy traffic, so this would benefit them as well as, well as us. And, and not closing the whole road, as you see on the right-hand side, we would have to create a cul-de-sac there where it would stop because you cannot have a dead end without a hammerhead or a cul-de-sac. So that's the brief overview. If you have any questions for me, or go back to any slides, more than happy to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Faust. Is there any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Fur.
The industrial entrance that you're speaking of, are you gonna be doing it yourself?
Yeah. We will incur all those costs.
All the costs will be on your end?
That's correct.
We not gonna have anything to do with it?
We're not requesting any funds.
Just closing all that part so that you can do that.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let me, I would like to take just a second. This is, we're not actually voting to close this road tonight. I want to ask the county manager to kind of explain the process that we're going into. We're, we will be voting to open the process of closing the road, so this is not the final vote on this matter, so I'll let County Manager Lucas explain a little bit more.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I stumble, Jenny, Jenny would be there to pick me up. Basically, the, the, what you'll do tonight is the, a resolution within the intent, you can close the, close the road, you'll do that. Then the petitioner, legal counsel, Mr. Will, will actually publish notice in the paper. I believe it's got to be published for three weeks, that there'll be a public hearing to consider closing the road and that the county would recommend to the Department of Transportation Board that the road be closed. And so you'll hold a public hearing, which will be March fourth, because we have to have that three weeks, and so you don't have time before your next meeting. March fourth will be the public hearing. You'll, you'll pass another resolution that evening if you decide to, which from an economic development perspective, I would encourage you to strongly, strongly consider that, closing, recommending closing the road. You'll, you'll recommend that to the Board of Transportation. The Board of Transportation will never, will then receive that recommendation, and then they will abandon maintenance of that road. Once they abandon maintenance of the road, then you all, it'll come back to you a third time for you all to issue the order to close, for the road to be closed, and at that point in time, the company will be in a position to be able to move forward with their improvements. That just sort of gives you some idea of the timing. So you'll hold a public hearing in May or March. I'm not exactly sure, and Jenny may know this, how long it will take the Department of Transportation to make up their decision in terms of the abandonment of their maintenance. Hopefully, that process is no more than thirty to sixty days, but I'm not a hundred percent sure, and then, you know, hopefully, we'll get the ability to, to take action to formally close it at some point thereafter. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to add that Jenny Fur has been extremely helpful in the whole process of figuring all of this out, and we're very glad to have her help on, on all of this.
Thank you. Now, are there any questions? I knew you had one a second ago. Did you? Okay. Any other questions? Now, we need a motion to address the resolution that the county attorney passed out.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt the resolution of intent to close and abandon a portion of Coggins Road in the county of Stanley, North Carolina.
Okay, we have, we have a motion from Commissioner Allman and a second from, from Commissioner Morgan. And are, is there any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Item number five is the Transit Advisory Board Appointments. Presenter, Ms. Candace Moffett.
Hello. Thank you for allowing me to come before you tonight to request your recommendation and appointment for two new Transit Advisory Board members. As you recall, back in February, you appointed two individuals, reappointed Mr. Caesar Correa and Gary Lewis to their vacancies. We have two additional vacancies that were tabled until this meeting. One is the RPO Director, typically seated in that. We have a new RPO Director. He started in the last week or so, Mr. Lee Snuggs of Albemarle. And we also still need a representative from the South Stanley area, and at the last meeting, some of you said you may have some thoughts and hopefully a recommendation for that seat.
Any comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'll comment because I told Ms. Moffett that I would approach someone, and I did. Problem with that person, he has a lake home and he also has a home in Albemarle, and he didn't feel like he could serve for Norwood. So my recommendation to you would be to contact maybe a town commissioner in Norwood and see if they will come up with a potential candidate to serve on this board that is a permanent resident of Norwood.
Okay.
All right, any other questions or comments? What's the pleasure of the board with the appointment that we have been recommended?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we appoint Lee Snuggs to the, to the, to the board as the RPO Director.
Motion by Commissioner Lawhan, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Morgan. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Speaking to Ms. Moffett, congratulations on your new challenging job as the EDC Director.
Thank you. Looking forward to serving the board in a different capacity.
All right. All right. Item number six is the Order to Advertise Tax Lanes, and that will be presenter Clinton Swerengen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I would say we save the best for last, but we all know that's not true, so. I'm here tonight to satisfy general statute requirements, specifically one oh five, three sixty-nine A, which says the tax collector must report to the governing body the total amount of unpaid real property taxes for the current fiscal year, which is eighteen nineteen or tax year two thousand eighteen. Upon receipt of this report, the governing body must order a tax collector to advertise these tax liens. As of January twenty-ninth, the total amount of unpaid county real property taxes for the current year amounted to one million nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars, six, three hundred and sixty-one dollars and four cent. Just for some FYI, I know we have several new board members. Last year, that number was one million nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, so we're right where we were at last year. I ran the report last year on January the thirtieth, so another day. If I could have got January thirtieth numbers on this report, we'd have been less than, than what we were last year, so. That's the amount that's unpaid. Obviously, this amount will continue to be reduced as we accept payments going forward. Delinquent notices were actually mailed today for everything. Owen and our system, they'll hit the mailboxes probably on Wednesday of this week, and then we'll advertise sometime in March is what my plan is. Usually, it's the third week in March is, is when I pick. Has to be some cooperation with the SNAP because it takes up several pages of, of their paper and they want to know that in advance, so I'll work with them very closely getting that date nailed down. So my request is that the Board of Commissioners issue an order to advertise these tax liens during the month of March, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Swerengen. Are there any questions? Mr. Fur.
How many years does this back up as far as being delinquent taxes? I was told that after ten years, you mark it off. Is that correct?
That's correct. This amount on here, the one million nine thirty, that's all that's left for the two thousand eighteen taxes. That number starts off with the county. That number starts off with the county. This year was about 29,200,000 is what the levy was originally. To answer your question, yes. Statute limitation says after 10 years, I can't enforce, collect anymore. I can accept payments. So, if you're 12 years behind and you want to come in and pay your debt, we can take it. I can't force anybody to do it after 10 years. A lot of that that rolls off, and you'll see when I'm back in August for the settlement for the year, I'll have the amount of dollars that actually fell off from 10 years. Don't, I'm not exactly sure, but last year was like $75,000. So, if you take a $25 million levy in 10 years, we collected every penny of it except $75,000. That's what the number was last year. So...
How many, how much would you say a year is marked off?
That's what, last year, we marked off $75,000 of taxes for the county. That was the 2007 year that fell off.
Does this go against property?
No, it's gone completely. The statutes are very clear that after 10 years, it's gone. I can't garnish their wages. I can't attach their bank account. I can't foreclose. I can't take any action against them on those taxes.
But my question, I guess, is where I'm fuzzy, is why there's not anyone going after that? Why are they not being like, leans put on the property, garnishing their wages? Is that sort of scenario if it's that kind of?
Yeah, we, trust me, we try every possible avenue that we can to collect this money. Most of this money that's owing is on old registered motor vehicles. In 2013, the law changed where now you pay your taxes when you get your tag renewed, and that almost ensures 100% collection rate. Great law that they passed to make that happen. Problem is, I still have old bills in the system. Well, if you don't work and you only get social security and you've got an outstanding car bill from 2009, well, number one, the car's either been totaled or traded or gone. So, I cannot levy against that car. I can't foreclose on it like I do a house. The car's gone. The person doesn't work. Their wages, which is social security, is protected by statute. I have no avenue to collect that money. Does that make sense?
So, it's not just per se on all of those bills also?
Yeah, it's on everything. That's everything. Real property, personal property, public service, registered motor vehicles, whole, everything.
Any other questions from the board? Commissioner Jordan?
So, if I understand that right, we start with the, you said we start this year with somewhere around $25 million?
29 million. Yes, sir.
$30 million. By this time next year, you worked that number down to about 1.9 million?
Uh... Well, yeah, from July, when the bills went out to now, everything's been paid except 1.9 million. What I call it is the willing payers.
Right. And so, between now and you chase down the unwilling?
From now till June 30th, I go after everybody I can and use every remedy I can to collect it.
The last time you got that figure, when you came to this board with the 1.9 million dollars, you managed to get down to $75,000?
No. No, that was the 2000s.
That's true, but all.
Right. That is correct. And that's on the annual settlement statement every August. So, when we issue 2019's taxes and then the July 1st of August, and I appear before you then to get the charge to collect, you will also see the amount written off for 2008's that we didn't collect.
Clinton, you can probably clarify the percentage that you're going to have collected by the end of July, I guess. It normally runs 90 whatever percent.
Last year was 97.28. That's the highest it's ever been in Stanley County. And the whole time, I've been working here for 17 years in this capacity for the last six. But, I mean, that's the highest collection rate we've ever had. Some of the larger counties, Wake, Macklinburg, they'll approach 99. And that's simply because they have more staff and more people to go after, you know, what they have. But back in July of last year, this board approved a new foreclosure attorney for us to use, and we're already utilizing that. So, it's a valuable tool that wasn't used before I took over as tax administrator that I felt like we needed to use. And like I say, my goal is to get every dollar for the county that I can because that gives you guys more leeway to spend money to help our citizens however you deem fit.
County Manager Lucas?
I'd just like to tell, say to the board, that collection rate's important because we use that collection rate. That's the collection rate we have to use for the next year's budget. So, when, you know, we say what the, have your ad lorem tax base, and that's what Clinton believes is the total value out there. Boats, vehicles, business, personal property, real property, public service, all of that, and that's the value. And then, you have the tax rate, and you also have the collection rate, which ends up being your levy.
Right.
And so, that collection rate's important because if that collection rate's 95%, I have to use that collection rate from the previous year. If it's 97%, just that two percentage points makes a big difference in terms of how much revenue we anticipate being able to have in the budget. So, that's a big deal. And certainly, Clinton and I have a conversation every month about where our collection rate is and what we're doing. And he does a good job of holding these folks accountable, and then they work hard.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas. Are there any other questions? If not, we'll have to have a motion for the tax collector.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Morgan?
I'd like to make a motion that we issue an order for the tax collector to advertise these tax leans during the month of March.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan. We have a motion. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Fur. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, board. Thank you, Mr. Swerengen. All right, that brings us to the consent agenda tonight. What's the pleasure of the board with the consent agenda? Motion to approve by Commissioner Morgan. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Almond. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. All right, public comment? We didn't have anybody signed up. Does anybody have anything they would like to say? Nope, all right. Board comments? We'll start with Commissioner Fur.
Next thing I would like to say is to thank everybody for going along with what we did with Ralph Swerengen. I greatly appreciate everybody seeing what we had going on with that. I think we showed that our compassion for what has been still shows truth for Stanley County. I just want to say thank you.
Commissioner Almond?
I just want to thank the kids from East Albemarle who were able to be with us tonight, and also thank Sheriff McLean for being here. And just want to tell our Sheriff Crisco and all our local law enforcement, we appreciate the job they're doing.
Commissioner Morgan?
I'll just concur. Mr. Trauman just said.
Thank you. Commissioner Lawhan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just an update, I attended a quarterly meeting with the Charlotte Regional Business Alliance on January 28th, which is a combination of Charlotte Chamber and the Charlotte Regional Partnership, which we're a member of. The CEO position for that organization, they have been interviewing. They were down to three candidates, and they assured the members that within the next two weeks, they should have a new CEO in place. One of the topics discussed was a legislative review. And Representative Jason Sane, who's the 97th North Carolina House District, he's also, I think, co-chair of the Appropriations Committee, the 97th is up in Cleveland County. He was there. He's a Republican. Representative Becky Carney was there, which is 102nd North Carolina House District, which is Charlotte. I think she said she was in her eighth term. So, she's been in Raleigh a long time. I think the thing they talked about was that the new legislation, legislators would have to work hard, hard to work together, and they thought they would because the difference between Republican and Democrat, I believe, is now only 10. So, the Republicans don't have what you, I guess, you could call the super majority. And both, both of the representatives there felt like that they would work hard to work better together, which I hope they do. And I wished our United States House and Senate would work better together because it's evident they're not working better together. So, that's a pretty good meeting. Enjoyed attending that particular meeting. Locally, I want to report on building permits for January 2019. There were a total of 28 new home, residential home building permits issued, which is up 33% over last January. Total value is 5,173,000, which is up slightly, 2% over last January. Average value was 184,759. And I see our chief inspector sitting in the audience, and I appreciate the work you and your department do. Keep up the good work. Keep issuing those building permits because that gives us future tax dollars. Thank you.
Mr. Jordan?
No major comments from me. I want to echo the sentiment previously about the children coming up tonight, those reports. I kind of sat there making notes. I said, the first one, well, left Chick-fil-A. He needs to go on EDC. The next one was going to solve homelessness. That's the new director of the DSS in 20 years. We got, the next one was a civil engineer. I mean, she laid out a plan. I was like, wow, well, she used to go to work for us. And the fourth one is going to work for you, Jeff. So, I mean, she was going to write speeding tickets all over the county. I mean, so, it's good to see four people that active at that age. I hope they stick with it. But I thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barbie?
That's true. Ditto, all that, and Commissioner Fur, Commissioner Almond also. So, nothing new to add to it. Just thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
County staff? Nope. All right. I would like to echo most of the comments. I made some when they were up here. The, those kids did a great job. Thank you to the Pfeiffer students and Stanley Community College students that came out. Wes Stanley was also represented in that group. I don't think any of those students could make it tonight. I think they were supposed to have one or two, but some athletics was kind of, kind of in the way. So, they were, they were also included in that proclamation, but weren't able to be here tonight. But again, I would also like to comment on the detention center naming. I think it was a wonderful idea. And also, like I said earlier, it was, to me, it was just an honor to sit in the same room with a man that gave 28 years to law enforcement, or really 35, but 28 is sheriff. Much less go down and have my picture and shake his hand. So, I think we did a great thing tonight. And I can't wait to see it up on the building. So, there's nothing else. We'll seek a motion to adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Lawhan, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Morgan. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you all.